Thank you. Okay, we're back to our work session. We've closed the executive session and came back into open session. It is now eleven-ten, so we will start with our first item. We'll ask Felicia to come up, introduce herself and...
And we already said the Pledge of Allegiance because we had a town board meeting prior to the executive session, so.
Good morning.
Still morning, right?
Yes. I am Felicia Skokosa from Riverhead Community Awareness Program.
Hi, Felicia.
Thank you. Hello. So I'm here to invite the town board officially and the community to come to the thirty-third Annual Say No to Drugs March next Friday, June first. It starts, we start marching at nine-thirty, but we ask you to be in your classrooms by nine. There is a rain schedule, in case it rains, I'll send you that.
You almost never need that, though, right?
Oh, don't.
Over the years.
Yes, and two years in a row, though, was just awful. But no, the weather looks good, so you should be okay. It doesn't affect anyone who's with a fifth grade class, which would be the two of you, and then the two of you are with sixth grade classes, so it might affect you. So I'll let you know when we get closer and when we see the forecast, but I'll let you know. So it's an annual event, as you know. The kids are celebrating the completion of their two-year life skills program at Pulaski Street School, and there's a ceremony afterwards, which typically will start at ten-thirty. The supervisor will speak briefly at the ceremony, but the rest of the town board is invited to come up to the podium for photos and such. So, and I have your T-shirts. Yay, that, I was hoping we could pose for a picture with the T-shirts.
Nice.
This is the unveiling of the T-shirts.
Are we putting them on?
Double-fisted, were you?
He's got my camera. Did you wear a larger XL?
I believe I'm an XL, I think.
Because a lot of people put them over their clothes anyway.
See, I constantly get asked my T-shirts.
Are we supposed to put these on? No, we can hold them up in front of ourselves for the photo.
I was gonna put it on.
Thank you. Don't catch me with my cigarette in my mouth.
Do you want to stand over here, so we can all...
Yeah.
Watch out for my high-back chair. These new chairs are so big, I can't get behind them.
Oh, my God.
I think I model the front, I'll model the back, how's that?
Good.
Wait. All right, who are we looking at here?
He's taking pictures with Denise today.
No, that's my phone. So I hope to see you all there.
I have wanted every color in my ten-year tenure.
Thank you, Felicia.
Got a lot of chachkis.
Yes, we do.
It's a great event, it really is a great event.
Thank you.
It has been for how many years now?
Thirty-three.
Felicia, you do a good job, very good job, and it's so, I mean, you're so focused on accomplishing your goals.
Thank you.
That you do a terrific job, and, you know, getting your awards this year is pretty amazing at CATPA, so.
And all the other groups are learning from you.
Thank you.
Correct. Oh, and I did forget to mention that Sergeant Sean Cassidy from the New York National Guard Counter Drug Task Force is this year's honored guest at the CAT March, so you'll be marching with him in the front. And he'll be making a speech after the other elected officials speak. He'll be doing his main speech for the kids, so he's a really great guy.
Now, are you working with the National Guard a little bit?
Yes, they are, a lot. They are a great support to our coalition, and they also volunteer at Pulaski Street School as well. So the kids love them.
Yeah, I'm sure they love it, too, right?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Sean is one that's at your meetings?
Yes, he comes to all the meetings.
Yeah, he's a nice guy.
Yeah, he's super nice. And while I'm here, and I was speaking to the country fair group earlier, I just wanted to remind the town board and that it's been three years almost since the alcohol policy went into effect, so any groups that got trained in the tips for concessions the first year, they're up for renewal. So any, anyone who got trained the first year for the country fair, the Polish fair, et cetera, would be up for renewal, and book your slots early. As long as we have our grant, we'll do it for free for any group that's interested.
So what do they do, they usually, they contact?
CAT, they can contact Kelly Malansky at CAT.
Okay, very good.
So do you have a list of the people that actually took it?
We actually submitted that list to the town attorney's office. I believe Anne Marie has it, so, yeah.
So that we can go off that list and make sure those people...
Yeah.
And we'll do it because they...
Since they have to submit them thirty days in advance, they should really book their session early, so we can accommodate everyone.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
See you next week.
You shouldn't tell me we're red today.
You didn't get the memo, it ran on your tie.
Okay, next, we will call up, you're Randy Siegel?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. Bob, if you'd like to come over. I'm just not sure, do I have to open a hearing for this?
Well, it's a hearing under our taxi ordinance law, so it's not a public hearing in the sense that we're, you know, taking up legislation, but it is a hearing under the taxi operator and taxi hire law. Reason we're here is...
Do you just want to explain, it comes to the town board because we don't have a...
We don't have a licensing appeal board.
Yeah.
Southampton, Southampton does, so obviously this is not really the best form for this to be done in, but our statute provides that an individual applies for an operative license under two-eighty-one-five. There's certain criteria that disqualify the town clerk from issuance of a license, one of them being a felony within the last ten years, another being a DWI conviction, another being possession or sale or manufacture of unlawful drugs. And Mr. Siegel's here because as a result of the fingerprint search, there was a matter that came up, two thousand twelve. If he agrees, it was a conviction in the state of Florida, and so it's felony within the last ten years. He has a right to appeal. His board will consider factors that he's put forth in writing. It'll be considered pursuant to our ordinance as well as under the New York State Corrections Law to determine whether his request will be granted and whether the previous denial will be reversed or whether we upheld.
So today we are just listening to Mr. Siegel's facts, or we're making a determination?
What we'll do today, if everyone agrees, is we'll listen to what Mr. Siegel has to say as far as reasons why he believes that he should be granted the license. I probably have, will have some follow-up questions in order to adhere to the New York State Corrections Law. If he wants to respond or provide us any additional information, he can. That may result in some additional questions. If you want to give him an opportunity to provide further information in writing, you can, and then we'll make a determination. We don't have to make the determination today. I think probably we'll do it by resolution on June fifth.
Okay.
Mr. Siegel, would you like to...
Yeah, I'm just gonna kind of start with a little history about myself. In two thousand six, I had a debilitating stroke, and I couldn't work. I had a facial slurr for like almost three years. But 'cause I'm a salesman, that's what I've done most of my life. When you're a salesman, you have a big mouth, you talk a lot. So I, basically, after about three years, I was able to get productive. Well, after that started, which at that time I had a really good job, sales position with a company, the flooring industry in Florida, which is construction industry, the bottom fell out. And you know what happened with mortgages in Florida and everything else, so I was without work. Started losing my house, and I got involved in what I shouldn't have got involved in. And I started selling drugs to pay my mortgage. And I was not a, what you would call a doer, you know. I was just, did it to try to make a living, because there was no living to be made at the present time. I lived out, way out in the middle of the country. So I apologize, I did my time, I did the crime. And really, if you look at my record, and he's seen it before, I really don't have anything on my record. I mean, that, so if you look back to when I was a kid, the last thing that comes up before this incident was in nineteen-seventy-four.
So when were you, when were you convicted?
I was convicted in two thousand twelve.
Okay.
And I'll give you, for example, right now, Lowe's has hired me, so I'm working at Lowe's as a salesperson, and also, you know, labor, too, I gotta, what I sell, I gotta load. But I'll give you, for example, this is my schedule this week. And one, two, three, four, five, guess what? Our day is off on Saturday and Sunday, and I haven't picked up my new schedule for it. Oh, yeah, look at, see? I have gaps in between. I can't, I don't have money to pay, you know, I'm fighting to pay rent and everything else. Whenever you go with a resume for a job, or you fill out a job, which I've literally filled out a hundred of them, at least, the felony goes right to the trash. People don't even look at them. And I've been told that by several companies, you know, my family's been in this town for a hundred years. So, I mean, I know people, and they say they just won't hire them, they don't want to take a chance, or whatever it is. And I've been cleaning silver for like seven years, no problems of any, I don't drink, I don't smoke cigarettes, I don't do anything. You know, I have a clean driver's license. All I basically want to do is get an opportunity to make a living, fill in the gap, you know, of my schedule, which you're welcome to look at, and, you know, and I have proof that I have six years. And this is just my resume to show you before I came from Florida. I mean, I had good sales positions, you can call any of my old employers and see how I worked and everything else. And they'll back what I'm saying, and if I could ever get people to call there, so I can get a, you know, decent job. But New York's not the same in the flooring business. In Florida, you might be in a town, and they might have fifteen stores. And out here, there's like one good one, every big, every big town, because I get, because of the taxes and what it costs to do business. But, so I can't seem to get a job in that industry. And again, when they find out I have felony, and I'm not lying on my application, because you're not supposed to. And I, you know, so that's, um, let me just see what else.
So do we have a copy of the conviction?
I have information that I was able to pull up from the Florida Corrections offender network, which I was going to ask Mr. Siegel about. It shows that on December twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve, that's when he was sentenced.
Yes.
And it shows that there were two counts, one on January ninth of two thousand twelve, and one on February first of two thousand twelve, which I understand were undercover purchases of oxycodone.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And they charged me for one crime. They gave me, even in their probation, coming to New York, you know, I was on an interstate transfer. They obviously trusted me to come here because of not having much of a record. And I've, my probation's off in, in February fifteenth, it's dropped, you know, that's it, it's done.
And there's been no further convictions after that?
No, there hasn't, there's nothing else after that. The record does show that he was released from Florida on February fifteenth of two thousand fifteen. Would you concur that that sounds correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that he's currently on probation, and his anticipated date of release would be February fifteenth of two thousand nineteen from supervised probation in the county of Suffolk.
And the taxi laws seems to be different than other laws for applying for jobs, that they do have these, you know, with either DWI, possession or sale of drugs. That is not something that's common in other qualifications for other jobs, is that correct?
I'm not sure I answered the question. Our statute, I can just refer, I'll speak to our statute. Our statute has certain things that the town board, when they adopted the taxi ordinance, made as a disqualifier, sale, sale or manufacture narcotics, DWI, conviction, not a driving while impaired, felony within ten years.
But that's not typical, typical, that's particular to this, to this job. It's not common to have in other jobs.
When we adopted the Taxi Cab Legislation, we pulled from other towns
Right.
that had these laws in it.
Our statute has some similarities, yes.
Obviously, you want to make sure that the driver is responsible, and that they're not, you know...
That's my point, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. That, you know, the job that you're requesting, you know, has these requirements in them for a particular reason, for the safety of the public.
I understand that.
That's correct.
That's, that was my point.
And I'm saying, I'm not, you know, I'm a circumstance that's a little bit different, because I would feel it's the only real major crime I've ever done in my life, and I paid for it. And I think that if there's other situations besides me, like if there's, like, the county that has a review board for it, Southampton has a review board, there's a lot of people with...
Do you possess a license, do you possess a license in any of those other areas? Do you, did you go to Southampton, or did you go, do you have, do you carry a taxi license with any, any other, the other counties?
No, I could drive in Brookhaven, because you can have a town license and drive there. But I live in Riverhead, my parents are ninety years old, I'm kind of oversee of the caregivers. My mom and dad are both ninety. My mom's in the hospital right now, which, after I leave here, that's where I'm going.
Have you applied to Southampton for, have you gone before there, any other, any other review boards still apply?
No, I talked to them about it, and they, you know, basically, I want, I live in Riverhead, you know, I want to be near my parents.
Have you applied to any of these other towns for, to go before the review board for a taxi license?
No.
Your dad is what, Mickey?
Yeah. I mean, I'm kind of embarrassed to be here because of what I, what I did, but you're not still gonna make a living?
Bob, do you have any other?
Not really, I mean, I think that the board, I'll ask the board to look at the criteria that are in the corrections law. One thing from, from just a couple of brief questions. So at the time this happened, I think if I have, your current age is sixty-one.
Yes.
At the time of the arrest, you were fifty-four, and at the time of sentence, you were fifty-five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you understand, well, no, the, those are the only two matters that are on your current arrest history or fingerprint history, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you explained already to the board the circumstances under which you found yourself in trouble with Florida. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, the only thing is, I mean, I hope that you guys do create a review board for other people that are in the same circumstance, and or something similar to it, where they can get a second chance.
And, oh, I know one question. You've, you've applied or tried to apply for a certificate of relief from disabilities, and can you tell us what the results of that inquiry were?
I did, I didn't go through it, because they said they, you know, she said that, basically, they have to for...
Who's that?
They, yes, in the county.
Florida or the county's Probational Department?
Yeah, not you guys and not Southampton. But they, they're gonna stick with that, they didn't even want to go through it. They're not giving me the opportunity, even though I reside in this town.
Okay. And who did you speak to in particular at the county?
Just somebody, that was one of the supervisors up on the third floor.
Do you have a name?
No, I don't.
Can you supply a name?
No, but I guess I'll go back there and do something, I mean...
And can I say, can I just ask, since this two thousand twelve conviction, have you failed any drug or alcohol tests?
Nope, not at all.
How often do you, have you been taking them?
They take, I probably took it fifty times or more. Every time I go to probation, they give it to me.
I'm sorry, how frequently do you appear now? What's your, how frequently do you have to report?
Right now, they, they lowered it about, I think about four or five months ago, to every three months.
Okay.
And because I'm such a low risk, and every time they've come to my house, or they've done anything, I've always come up clean.
So they do drug test you every time you go back to probation?
Not every time, I mean, but, yeah, they'll spot check it now at this point, because I'm off February fifteenth, I'm done with it.
Where, in the conviction, were you using and selling, or were you just selling?
I have no convictions in that. I was trying to save my house, I was losing my house, I was months and months behind in my mortgage, I mean. And when you're out in the, you're living out in the country, and it's no reason to do it, I shouldn't have done it. Plain and simple. Screwed up, and right now I'm paying for it. And I don't know if I can get to the person that I spoke to that day, but...
Well, if you can give me your probation officer, maybe that person can give me the information, if you can provide that name and contact.
Any other questions, Bob, anybody from the board? Okay, so Mr. Siegel, I think that we'll, we'll talk, figure out what we're gonna do, and then we'll come to some sort of conclusion, and then we'll have a resolution for, for this hearing for the January fifth of board meeting.
June fifth.
June fifth, what did I say, February?
I will tell you one thing, I know for a fact that New York State is a lot more apt to do things for a felon. In Florida, it's worse. If I go back and try to get a cabby license, let's say in the city of Tampa, I gotta be five years after my probation's over, and then, so I have to be like sixty-seven years old, and then I can go for my hack license, if they do do hacks. So yes, you know, if I'm gonna do a hack, I want to do it here.
Are you looking to drive for an existing company in Riverhead?
Yeah, Riverhead Town Taxi, you can call them up, and he'll give me a good referral. He's the owner.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So what do you want from me, and when do you want it by?
The quicker you get the information from the county probation department for me, the better. So if you can get it to me tomorrow or first thing next week, I appreciate it.
All right, I'm gonna try to go by there today or tomorrow, probably tomorrow, go to the hospital right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Siegel.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's a really nice purple case there, very, very...
County fit?
Very, yeah.
That I got, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Farujia, I believe.
Hello, how are you? I'm just gonna have you guys announce your names and what you're here for.
Tom Farujia, Riverhead Country Fair.
Shannon Reitz, Riverhead Country Fair.
Do you want one, Dan?
Yes, please.
This was the packet I had provided you through courses of emails.
Okay, great, fantastic.
All righty.
All right, Riverhead Country Fair, we plan on hosting our forty-third Country Fair on October seventh of this year. No rain date.
Oh, okay. Come on, how about ponchos?
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
As far as any big changes, we're not asking Riverhead Town to co-sponsor this year. We're gonna have our own insurance, and that's Shannon Forte here with Dan.
Right, so let me just jump in for a sec. Thank you so much, just to clarify where we are. As you may know, last year, the town board agreed to co-sponsor the event, as per the request of Townscape, based on the insurance issue. We provided insurance under our policy, under what's known as a co-sponsorship scenario, whereby we were allowed to extend insurance on any event we co-sponsor. We did that last year. This year, Townscape wishes to sever that co-sponsorship scenario, because they wish to obtain their own insurance, and they have provided a proposal regarding that insurance, which matches the insurance that was required last year. So they're coming before you for that request at this point. Regarding the tip scenario, and the illusion by Felicia earlier today, they have agreed to adhere to all of the alcohol policy considerations that were granted last year as a condition of co-sponsorship going forward. The one question which perennially comes up on this issue, and certainly because I do the Live on Twenty-Five scenario as well, is whether or not the town board is gonna require pens as you do for Live on Twenty-Five. So I need direction on that particular issue. I believe there are two proposals on that issue, pens or no pens. Obviously, traditionally, it has been an open scenario whereby pens were not required, and so we come before you to seek guidance on that issue.
Okay.
I, I don't think the setting, it's really not limited to just Main Street. It's kind of a spread out, you got the agricultural and the farm community, and the background, Eastern Arts property. I know this, this year, there's more, this year, there's more going on in Vanderbilt Park as far as kid stuff and library stuff, so the pens really is restricted. You don't want to crowd people.
How, how many, how many vendors serve alcohol?
We have about, I'd say roughly around ten, ten vendors.
But they're...
They're on Main Street?
They're business owners.
They're business owners, correct.
We don't...
In years past, we did have Riverhead Rotary, as well as their fundraiser, and this year, they will not be doing it, it will be just the restaurants. Right, and to address that directly, last year, there were seven. There were ten that started out. Unfortunately, three of them could not acquire the insurance as required, so it wound up only being seven at that particular point. On that point, though, they're prepared to provide insurance to the town as additional insured, as a condition of the special events permit, is that correct, Tom?
Correct.
Well, my question is, how close are they located to each other? Is there any, because I know at some other fairs, I know in West Hampton, they do it, like on the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I know that the Maritime Festival has done it, where they have a beer garden. So you can buy from a vendor, but then you can, you either buy it from the vendor, and it's in the beer garden, they participate in the beer garden, or they can stay within their, within their, within their restaurant area, so, because it really is a family event, and I think that's part of the alcohol policy that we have. So my question is, is, are the people selling alcohol, will they be located close together, where there could be a beer garden centrally located for everybody?
It's throughout the whole fairgrounds. From Griffin, you have Crooked Ladder, and Diggers on that end, all the way down to the Elbow Room, which is the other end of the fairgrounds.
Rondell.
Yes, the restaurants themselves, that get booze, and they sell, they get their SLA licensed, off-premise license for that day, and they get the extra insurance that they need to put in. And it's the restaurants themselves that sell alcohol, we don't have the vendor that sells alcohol.
My, my question is, could you do something along the line where you do the cafe permit? You know, you go, you go in front of your store, the same as if you, you know, put tables out there, you know, where you do, you don't have to have a pen, per se, but you need to be limited, limited between in front of your building to your curbside, as, like, if you gave temporary cafe, cafe, cafe permits to these venues, so that they wouldn't have to do a full pen, they stay located where they are, so there wouldn't be open bottle all through the fair themselves. But it wouldn't have to be inside, because you're trying to promote the outside.
Would it be closed off, is that something like...
It doesn't necessarily have to be closed, closed off, per se, but they need to, if somebody's walking around outside of those permitted cafe areas, they would be, they would be ticketed.
Okay, so let me answer that, from our perspective, right, town board, right? You're gonna approve this event.
Right.
You can actually include conditions as you're addressing, meaning we will want it to limit only to where you are in terms of proximity to your establishment. However, I believe there may be practical concerns about that from what you're saying, is that correct?
Yeah, no, I...
So I think that's the question you need to answer for the town board, as to whether or not that's practical regarding the tradition of the fair and the nature of the event.
I don't know with the traffic flow of people and just everything, the way our vendors are set up and everything else, if that is practical, the way, the way that the Country Fair is set up, you have vendor, vendor, vendor. It's not a Live on Twenty-Five.
Right.
It's not where you have a pen set up, a band, and people are drinking and congregating for that purpose.
I understand that, that's why, that's why I say if it...
A less formalized...
A less formalized thing, so it's not an extra expense to the business. If they want to be able to serve their alcohol, they'd be permitted within their building front, out to the curb. But then patrons would know if they ventured out of that area, that they're, that they will be ticketed for carrying, carrying the alcohol, same as you are outside of the pens at Alive on Twenty-Five, but it wouldn't be an extra expense to the, to the, to the business owners.
In West Hampton Beach at the St. Patrick's Day, they have security guards outside the door where you can't leave the premise with your alcohol, you have to stay inside of the building.
Which makes sense for the, for the event given.
For that type of event.
But for this, I think it would be a hindrance for multiple purposes. One, I think that you will deter the person that goes to have a drink from wanting to have a drink because they can't walk freely with their family. So say you have a family of four, the father decides he wants a beer, but he's pushing a stroller, now what's mom and the four-year-old kid doing? They're standing here while he's having his beer instead of freely flowing through. Now, all four have stopped because he can't leave that spot, and traffic clogs and it's not free-flowing, I, I think that that will cause, you know, other issues.
Yeah, I, I, my, my only, my only concern with this is that I think that the policy with the pens was put in place because it was determined that, that, and it was, uh, the board's pleasure at the time to go that way, was because there were some surveys done and they found out that there were a lot of kids drinking, or having access to alcohol at these type of venues when there was this free-flowing, um, type of, type of ability to have the open containers wandering around. And then it was promoting something that we didn't necessarily wanna promote, um, in the community, and that was what the coordinator areas were for.
Felicia and Kelly Moab, from CAP, we have a great rapport, I mean, we work hand in hand with them.
If I, if I could just say something, Tom.
They've mentioned how well we work with them, at their own event at the Firehouse, they were mentioning to the people how well we work.
Riverhead, historically, Riverhead Country Fair was the very first fair that implemented this alcohol policy. In fact, Riverhead Fair was the one instrumental in actually purchasing the first batch of these bracelets that people had to wear, and that the stores have to get to put on people. It's important, it's an October event. It's not a hot summer night, so there's, there's not the amount of drinking that you think. And I tell you, forty-three years of the fair, I, I can't think of more than one incident over forty years.
I didn't know until last year that alcohol was even allowed.
And, right.
No clue.
And I, I think the fact that you, it is a family event, you've got pumpkin decorating and pie tasting, you've got, we've got rides for the kids, we've got petting, we've got, we've got a showmobile with entertainment, so it is type of, all right, let me, let me, let me get a, try this beer from wherever, and, and walk around with your family, look at the arts, and look at the crafts, and maybe go down to Showmobile and listen to the band playing. So it is kind of a very lax, uh, type of atmosphere, so I think corralling, I, see, I'm not big on, I mean, I understand beer gardens and corralling on certain events that pretty much circle around that type of venue, but this certainly is not the one that, drinking is not a big, big.
Forty-three years. It's not broke, don't fix it, okay? This atmosphere at the fair, what you've done with the wristbands, works. It's not an issue.
And it's plastic wear, there's no glass.
It's not a drink fest. Alive on Twenty-Five, it's not a drink fest either, but it's a different type setup with the bands and the music and the hours and everything else. I agree with the pens for Alive on Twenty-Five, I do not agree with pens for your, for the Country Fair, I really don't.
So.
I worked it as a cop, as Jim did, for many years, we rarely, rarely had an incident.
No, I couldn't wait till the end to finish up all of your barrels.
Maybe it wasn't even alcohol-related, so to say that for forty-three years, I like it the way it is.
Have you spoken to Felicia and CAP about this proposal, and have they said that they support the idea of not having corrals?
Working with them in years past, they know the way we do it, and they're, they're fine with it because of how tight we've been. I only assume they know we're doing the same way we've been.
And then to the board.
However, we've even taken it a step further for, for this year. All the restaurants know they have to have self-identifying cups, that, you know, that way, if there is someone underage with the bracelet, you know where it came from. They're dumb that day, you know what I mean? It's another added responsibility to the person serving.
So all the restaurants are tips, tips changed, that will be served?
And they, they're gonna have their cups, so that if someone is causing trouble, then they see that what cup they have, and that they've been served too much. So, how do we differentiate this from the, um, Polish Town Fair, where we require them to have corrals? Or do we let them walk freely with?
Riverhead Townscape doesn't sell beer.
Where the Polish Town.
Polish beer sells beer.
Sells their beer.
We don't, we let the restaurants handle that, that's, that's.
So if Polish Town on Burchwood wanted to.
Polish Civic sells beer.
And doesn't the Polish beer go after dark?
Go there for the beer kabassi and pierogies, that's what it is.
But they.
This isn't what the Country Fair is.
I know, but I'm just saying, well, we have to do the same for everybody, that's also.
The restaurants are going to be serving alcohol from inside their store or outside their store? If somebody wants to get some.
Both.
They think of the license from the SLA.
I almost feel like the corrals on this might create more of a bar atmosphere and might actually encourage more drinking for some reason. I mean, I don't know if it's changed, but I've been going to the Country Fair my whole life, and I don't really remember there being a lot of drinking there.
I can tell you, as a parent of a thirteen-year-old, I do not take my daughter to Alive on Twenty-Five. We went twice.
I don't take mine either.
And I don't take her there because I feel it promotes a drinking atmosphere, and we do not go anymore. Country Fair, she's been going to, this will be her going on fourteenth year, so.
I will give you this, if the Riverhead Townscape running the Country Fair decided to sell beer, yes.
Okay.
Right.
Corral it in.
Absolutely, I totally agree.
If you wanna drink off us, then we got it, you know, it's a whole different.
Right, where's the restaurants doing it, the vendors, the restaurants downtown?
The owners saw them, they get their insurance, they get their SLA license to sure outside.
This is what they do for a living, they're not putting themselves out there for anybody, the restaurants.
The, the only, the only issue I have is, if, if a craft brewery decides to come in, you know, if you had, you know, one of these, one of these, you know, mobile trucks with the beer things on it, anything like that, because they're still a vendor, they're still a vendor, so it's, it's only the restaurants that have a brick and mortar place that will allow, no outside alcohol besides brick and mortar that's currently there.
Right, we don't, we don't want.
Which is the purpose, for bringing people downtown, for these vendors to prosper.
So that's exactly what it is. Businesses, the businesses all just deserve.
Right, that's business owners.
And I wonder if we could concur with the chief and see if there've been very many incidents the last few years. I mean, we.
Been a little raid the last couple of years.
So, just for comparison, because I know that the Polish Town Fair, they had a big problem with it when we adopted the alcohol policy, and they couldn't have the alcohol on the streets, and it had to be in the corral. So, the Burchwood, which is part of the Polish Town Fair, if they had their self-identifying cups, then people could leave the Burchwood with a drink and walk around freely, whereas if they were buying beer from the Polish Town Civic Association
I don't know.
as a vendor, then they would have to be in a corral. I just wanna be clear, because I know that they're gonna come back in and say, well.
I don't run the Polish Town Fair, I don't understand, I don't, I don't know.
We could limit the hours for alcohol sale for walking around, we could start it at twelve, and they'd have to stop serving for, for takeout cups by four?
I know there was a disconnect with the Polish.
I don't know if you wanna do that, as far as, because people are gonna give people.
I don't wanna be big government and start stepping in on everybody's business.
But I, but if you're gonna, if you're gonna compare it to this Polish Town Fair, and when you have that question, when you have the question for the Polish Town Fair, any, any restaurant that wants to sell, sell beer for walking around there, um, we're okay with that?
Polish Town Fair is in the middle of August, ninety-degree days, and it's promoted as a, I don't wanna say a drink fest, but it's, it's beer kabassi and pierogies.
I, I don't disagree.
It's not what an arts and craft Country Fair is promoted as, it, they're two totally different entities.
Well, they have some crafts for the Polish Town.
And I don't think, you're not comparing apples to apples when you talk about the two different functions.
But the alcohol is still a commonality between the two of them, so if you're going to say you can have alcohol at one, and we're permitting it under every single condition, as long as you have a brick and mortar store, somebody can come in, get a cup of alcohol and, or get a beer or whatever, and then wa- wander down the street.
I think they do lift the town code for the day, I think they do within, within the fairgrounds or within the, the scripted area. I think the forty-six one or whatever the new town code is for that is lifted for the day.
And it is, it, it's lifted, spanned for the day, but I would also, if you wanna do that, I would look at, um, talk to the chief, and talk about incidents at each event, and then you'll see that there are more incidents at one event than there are at others. So that might be a reason that some of those events are corralled and some aren't.
Do we wanna just do it for the DC one district?
No, I think you have to look at each event, regardless of where it's at, it's not, it's not the locale.
I disagree, I disagree with that, because, you know, you guys run a great event, but in year, you know, forty-five, it may be a different event, you know, and, and, and so.
That's why each year, we come to you.
Right, that's why, and if year forty-five turns into a drink fest, we won't change that.
We're, we're coming here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I've, I've been a member of, of, of the Country Fair Committee for thirty-five years, and I can tell you, it, it's changed and it's morphed, and it's, it's always been first and foremost to be centered around the agriculture of our community and the home goods, that's always been the basis of it. And then it morphed into, let's get the chamber involved, and they started doing the expo on Main Street, so we added more vendors, so that the chamber had one side of the street, so they could, you know, be exposed and, and earn a little bit of money actually for that. And then, so it's, it's, we've always moved and, and morphed to try to accommodate not only the community, but the town's wishes. The whole alcohol policy, when that went into place with the bands and the plastic cups and the, and the extra insurances, all those things, so, I mean.
And even this year, so, you know, with my involvement with the board and other people too, we have felt bringing back more of the agricultural, you know,
Aspect of it.
aspect of it is so important, so you'll see, we've added the petting zoo, we're, we're trying to make more spots throughout the fair that are truly geared for the young kids and the family atmosphere.
I think it's great, as long as it's, you know, and it promotes, I mean, the businesses and the restaurants will definitely benefit from this, especially because you don't have any outside vendors like Blue Point Brewery coming in with a truck or Rotary.
We don't compete with.
It'll help the businesses downtown, I, and there'll be, um, all of the other applications of the alcohol policy will be in place, where it'll be a plastic, they, and the size of the cups, the twelve-ounce cups instead of the sixteen-ounce, so there won't be buckets of voodoo juice walking around the fair and all that other stuff, so.
It's just, it's just beer, it's just, it's just beer and wine to walk around?
Beer, wine, and, uh, hard cider.
Okay, so, but it's only the three of those, right?
Correct.
We had champagne last year as well.
But, I mean, you can't even enforce that, because if I wanna go and order a vodka tonic and, and, you know.
Well, you're not allowed to leave with a glass.
Tweeds, but they won't put that in a plastic cup?
I don't know.
So for the board, so the board, so for the board, do you feel that, that we are okay with, with, with going with this without the pens? Is that the sense we're getting?
Yeah, I, I, I.
Just to give you some direction.
And there's no, there's nothing to indicate why we would need to.
I, I would just.
With pens in.
I would like to check with the chief.
Yes.
Make sure in the last couple of years, things haven't changed.
Yeah, if you guys could reach out to CAP also.
Absolutely.
Well, I can tell you, I've been here every year for ever, so.
Historically, it's been a real family event, I just don't know the last few years.
They'll find more strollers there than at any other event we have in town.
I'm confident.
And I, I would like you to ask, yeah, I would like you to ask the vendors, though, maybe to put some sort of sign up that we would, you know, it's obviously not, if we go this way, it won't be enforced, but to ask the venues, we would appreciate if you would stay, um, around here to consume your alcohol, uh, just before going to the rest of the, rest of the fair. People can choose to do it or not, but at least it's a suggestion that maybe people will comply with.
Prior to the event, a month out, a week out, two weeks out, a week out, I do sit with the chief, we, we do go over, you know, I, I sit down with Sergeant Sartre as well, we go over everything the day of the event, everything from setting up the barricades to the alcohol policy, to who's gonna be on, everything, so.
Right, the fire marshal, just to make sure that there's.
A workflow.
And you guys have been doing a great, great making downtown look beautiful with all the work you've been putting in, it's really, it's really nice.
Eighty more baskets are going up June thirteenth.
Very nice.
It looks good, they look really good.
And we're doing Polish Town this year as well.
I know, I heard, very good, very nice.
And the banners are not far behind, so.
Perfect, very nice, great job, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be the one to.
Okay, so I understand, I'm gonna hold the application in abeyance pending input from CAP as well as the chief, I'll bring this back before the board and we'll go from there.
Okay, yep, but I think we're moving the right direction.
Lowering the limits, right, because the, um, insurance limit required five million, so we're lowering it to two million?
Correct, same insurance requirements as last year, both insurance from Townscape directly as well as the individual alcohol vendors.
And then.
I've agreed to that, as well as the vendors, to my understanding.
But you realize that each restaurant will have to get the off, off-premise permit for the alcohol?
Correct.
From the SLA?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
And those.
The owners throw that.
Right, for clarification, SLA comes back to us to confirm that, so they will rely on us to tell them they've been approved as vendors, so we work close hand in hand.
And then, that's the only way you give them the permit, is once they've completed their.
They will not get bracelets or anything until we have all the proper papers.
That's what I thought, it's just a matter of paperwork.
It is, it's a matter of paperwork, but.
At two o'clock, I recommend the voodoo hunt on Main Street.
And then you guys are gonna have to figure out, like, if somebody didn't get their off-premise license.
Correct, Dan and I, again, we, we go through that pretty tightly.
Yes, SLA requires our permission regarding those vendors, they will ask.
No, well, I'm just saying that, you know, you can have tweets that gets their off-premise, but then, there's another business downtown that doesn't, and then they're still leaving with the alcohol even though they didn't have their off-premise.
Well, remember that they're not gonna have the proper cups.
They're not gonna have the proper cups.
Okay.
And if they're not on our list, the police department will be made aware of it.
Okay.
And we can also call SLA, and, yes.
And our, our two fifty-five policy with alcohol consumption, this, this is outside of that?
Right, you're suspending the public consumption statute in Riverhead for that event, within the fairgrounds.
Okay, so that would be what the resolution is doing for this particular, okay, so.
That's correct, that's the point, as you do with Alive on Twenty-Five, they limit it solely to the pens, literally.
Okay. Okay.
You have that leeway.
Okay, all right.
So that's why we're gonna hold everything in abeyance pending further consideration.
Okay, very good, all right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for coming in, Tom, I appreciate it, get back to work now.
You too.
Good luck. Hope to see you at the fair.
You're welcome, Tom, thank you, thanks for coming in, but Shannon, good seeing you as well.
People need you, John West, to get through it.
So Bill, we will call you up?
Bill who?
Bill Rother.
Who's that?
I don't know.
Oh, nice chairs.
We got them just for you.
That's a baby one.
So Bill, we called you up, this is for, uh, the EPCAL, the CAP financials overview, I know they have submitted a bunch of documents to us. We, as the board, we had asked whether we, where we review them and how to go over a couple of things, I know Derek's had a chance to review them. So did you just want to present some information on the documents?
Yeah, well, first of all, in, in the, um, qualified and eligible, this board makes the decision on what was, what they're willing to accept or not accept to satisfy, um, the qualified and eligible, okay? This board has a CDA board in this case. There were certain requested documents that I did not see, that either they didn't produce or I wasn't privy to, like financial statements and so forth, that if we did receive that, you know, we probably would've had an independent audit company come in and look at them and verify those numbers for you guys, but I have not seen those.
And I, you got a price for that, right, if they were to submit their certified financials, there was a price of like fifty thousand dollars in order to have those.
I didn't get that price, I don't know if someone else did, okay? In addition to that, in the past, we have waived that requirement, okay? Again, the board has waived that requirement, so, so really, what it is, is it's up to this board to determine whether you still want those statements.
Well, I, I'm gonna just pause you on that, because I don't know that that's necessarily true, and I think the legal question is still out on that, because we did pass a resolution in June of two thousand seventeen, um, that amended the qualified and eligible, and part of that is that we, you know, shall requiring certain financial documents, so that's still a legal question that's out, out there with that, we don't have the answer to that.
Meaning whether you can waive it or not?
Yes, correct, correct, yes, yes.
I'll leave that up to the attorney, I know we have waived it before, and, and, and basically, um, like I said, it's up to this board to be satisfied with or without those documents, I guess, and legally whether those documents have to be presented because they've requested. I didn't read through all of the, um, comments going back and forth and how they answered questions and so forth, I'm just talking based on the documents that were or not provided.
So, one of the questions, I guess, to the board, for the board that we wanna, the, the, in the qualified and eligible and the resolution, the documents that were requested, what, what kind of information would those documents show? Just to, to give, just to give a broad over, if, if, this is kind of, you know, just for informational for us as a board also, so, those are the financial documents that are requested, why are each one of those, and what do each one of those documents show?
So basically, we were looking for either personal or corporate financial statements that were audited, okay? If, if, depending on how the LLC was set up, at some point, there is either an individual or corporation at the very base of that, or five individuals, if that may be the case, okay? Then what you would be asking for would be their personal financial statements to justify or verify that they have the, the funds needed to do the project. So, in requesting, uh, in the request that you had, I think you had it where it was either corporate or, or personal, depending on who's finally backing.
But, but like, what's a pro forma state, like, just the basics?
A pro forma's a little different, that would be.
John, do you have the actual resolution for Bill, so he can adjust?
The CDA resolution from seventeen, or are you?
Yes, that, yeah.
A pro forma is a little different, a pro forma is now speaking to the, well, in this case, what you asked for, it was speaking to the project, okay? So, for instance, they would have, in asking for a pro forma, it would say, what do you expect the cost to be? And how do you expect to fund that, and over what time? And how do you expect to fund that and over what time? So whether that is reasonable to ask at whatever level, a pro forma would say, okay, it is a two hundred million dollar project that is gonna be fifty percent complete after the first year and whatever else it may be and how they're getting the funds. That would be something prospective to say, here's, once we sign this contract, how we go forward. The personal and corporate financial statements would be more to say, I have the funds to do that and I'm backing them with, you know, a guarantee that I have these funds or whatever else it may be. So, um, let me look through this.
So you said audited financial statements, either personal or certified. Are private companies that aren't on the public market required to get audits?
No, it's, there's, there's certain requirements for audits, whether you're being publicly traded, what your debt is, you know, you're lending.
If you're a publicly traded company, then you're required to get audits to show your shareholders.
Right.
But in a private business.
That's what I said. That would be the requirement of this board, okay? So if you require them to have audited financial statements, you know, I, I think if I.
This, this does not require them to be audited.
It's just financial statements.
Our, our resolution, but it does require the financial statements. They don't necessarily have to be audited.
All right, so, so going back to here, um, there was a pro forma financial statements that was requested and certified personal and corporate financial statements.
So from, you've reviewed the documents we've received?
Well, there were, there were no, there were none of these documents. I, I did not see any of those documents. In particular, a pro forma financial for the project or personal or corporate financial?
But this resolution that was adopted in June of two thousand seventeen was to amend the original rules and procedures of the Riverhead Community Development Agency because Riverhead Development Corporation was no longer in existence.
Right, this is just a clarification.
But, so this was originally adopted in two thousand six? And since two thousand six, there have been several qualified and eligible hearings that have come before the board that we have not required certified.
But it, but, but that, that, the, uh, the RDC or whatever that was, did require a vetting process before with the financials.
Understood, but we, but the resolution.
They were taken out of here, right? They were taken out of here and they were a vetting process prior to the qualified ineligible. That was in their, in part of their charge. So that was removed, but this remains in here that they shall provide this information.
Right, but you did ask for a legal opinion on that and we did get a legal opinion saying that it wasn't required.
No, we did not receive a legal opinion that said it wasn't required.
It said that it was up to the board to decide whether or not the information that we've received was adequate enough to make a decision.
But based on the, that's the information we received. But my question is, is this was done by resolution. The board adopted the resolution requiring these financial statements. Whether the board chooses or not to make a decision with or without these financial statements, I believe that a resolution needs to say that you're not requiring them because it's a resolution that we adopted that requires these. So if we are not going to require them, then there needs to be a resolution by this board that says that we no longer will require them because this is by resolution.
But the legal opinion that you asked for came back and said that that could be in the resolution to either approve or disapprove the qualification and eligibility of this applicant. So they said that could be in the, in the resolution to either find them qualified and eligible or find that they're not qualified and eligible, that that was not a consideration that the board took. And that's a legal opinion that you asked for, that we all got.
It doesn't, a legal opinion does not mean that, that I agree with that legal opinion. And the, and the opinion from the attorney said you could do either or.
Right.
So my, I, I believe that, and I'm presenting it to the board, that, that, which is aside the point because this is a different discussion that we're having with Bill, so I think Bill can finish his discussion. But my point is that, is that this board approved this resolution and it's, I'm just looking because there's also other.
This was done June sixth last year, correct?
Yes.
But only, but only change was to strike.
But RDC's charge, RDC's, RDC's charge was to vet.
That's all we did.
And we eliminated RDC because they're no longer in existence.
Because the new civility pointed that out, that they were still part of the CDA vetting process and they no longer existed. So we had to redo this to, for housekeeping to remove them. Nothing else has changed.
And, and I think we also got a legal opinion because you asked the outside counsel to get, give us a legal opinion as to which applications that not only the past board but previous boards, whether or not they considered. And I believe that the result was that the only, um, application where certified financials were submitted was, um, was it Reckler or Riverhead Resorts? Tim, do you remember?
But I'm, I'm gonna say that this was, this was reaffirmed just recently. Um, and if you're comfortable waiving the financial requirements on this deal, then that is fine. But it has to be done by resolution is my point. Because we, we adopted this by resolution, but I also think the, that, that there's also, and I'm just, I'll read this other thing. Um, the method to amend a local law or method to amend resolutions, um, that is the doctrine of legislated equivalency requires the existing legislation to be amended or repealed by the same procedure used to enact it. You know, and, and that's, that's what I'm relying on for why this has to be by resolution. I don't disagree if you are comfortable waiving the financials on this huge deal. That's, you're up to you. And if that's the way you wanna, wanna approach a deal, that is fine, but it needs to be done by resolution is my point.
Right, and the attorney agreed with you and said that it would be in the resolution.
If you would like to put, but it's not the resolution of the Q and E. It's a resolution to amend this resolution, number ten of the CDA.
I don't think so. And I disagree.
Well, okay. But I think that that.
That would be part of the, part of the whole, I would think the Q and E resolution.
Well, no, the Q, this is the process, this is the process of the Q and E. This is not the Q and E. The qualified and eligible hearing determines the qualification and eligibility of the applicant to go forward with the sale. This is not the qualified and eligible applicant's ability to go through this, through the sale. This is what we look at in judging whether the applicant is qualified or eligible to go there. So this is sort of the rules of the game versus do you meet those rules or not? So I'm saying, these are the rules of the game that we put in place by this resolution, ten of, of, of the CDA, that says you shall, it's not may, it's shall produce these, produce this information. So if we choose not to do this and if you choose not to want to see these financial documents.
I don't see the shall in it. You can say it nine times if you like, but I still don't see the word shall.
I, I'd like to know how it was done on other applications from my predecessors.
The finance acquisition.
The CDA shall ascertain whether the application, applicant is qualified and eligible pursuant to section five oh seven, two C of Article fifteen of New York State General Municipal Law and in accordance with the following criteria.
All right.
Okay? Demonstrate ability to finance the acquisition and development of specific project proposed, including the review of the CDA of pro forma financial statements or the proposed project, including sources and use of funds, certified personal and corporate financial statements of the applicant sponsor, financial commitment of the participating lenders, proposed security for the project, business plans and economic analysis of the project and past compliance with municipal laws, rules and regulations.
Okay.
So I think that we need to go back and look at past qualified ineligible. I mean, I see former councilwoman Barbara Blas is in the audience. And, and she, and she did vote on past qualified ineligible. And I'm curious as to whether or not those resolutions state that they're waiving the, the requirement of the certified or personal financial statements because, Barbara, maybe you remember.
Barbara, Barbara, not, but, but, I know, but not, not.
Just curious.
If you wanna call Barbara up, you can, but.
I'm just curious as to what those other resolutions were, they found applicants qualified and eligible, whether it was Vintage Group or Riverhead Resorts or.
Six seventeen, this board voted to amend the resolution for qualified and eligible.
Not to require those things.
It's shall, it says shall. It does not say may.
This is the resolution before us, not all the things in the past. This is what we're currently looking at. This is what we have and this is what you guys voted on that's required.
Right, but the only thing that changed from this.
Written in nineteen ninety-four.
Nineteen ninety.
The only thing done in two thousand seventeen was the strikeout of the RDC.
Right, which was the prior, which was the prior vetting entity.
Which was in, right.
And the prior vetting entity no longer exists.
It could join with the CDA, you're right. The vetting process went through the RDC, which no longer existed.
Right, so then it's more incumbent on the board when you say shall to review these documents that are required.
It said shall in nineteen ninety-four.
And you haven't had a chance to review anything.
And again, two thousand six.
But what would be your problem with voting on the resolution to waive it since that's what we're doing?
This means you have to.
Because the, I, I, as you have said in the past, I depend on the opinion of our outside counsel and our outside counsel is saying it's not necessary.
Was inconclusive. They said you could do either way. And my, you said you could do either way? I think that it should be done by resolution. That's my point.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, so Bill, and now we'll talk about the actual financial documents.
Which we don't have.
But, well, the ones that were submitted to you. You reviewed the documents that we did see and I'm just curious whether they, whether they attended to any of this stuff that was requested.
They, they did not, they were not what was requested in here.
So was there any of this information that is in B? Was any of this information sent to, sent to us?
No.
You're saying no.
No.
They did send us a document about forty million.
And that's not what was asked here anyway. Just to say that I have forty million dollars. It didn't say what it was invested in or where it was. So, um, it was just investments of forty million dollars, didn't determine where it was. And again, that's not your personal financial statement and it's also not a corporate financial statement. So it was neither of what was requested.
Okay, and then I know that you had reviewed the document that was a, an outside, um, a bond, a public bond, I think it was, for eight hundred million.
That is correct.
Um, and did you have a chance to look at that also?
Um, not, not pertaining to this project.
But could you just explain exactly what that was a little? It was given to the board for review as, as part of this information. Does it pertain to any of this?
No, that was, that was another municipality or quasi municipality that bonded money for a project that they did that they were involved with. That's all it was.
And I believe that they also submitted a document to us that said that they had some, uh, uh, real estate um, for, for two real estate, pieces of real estate that they had.
Yeah, I, I do remember that, but again, it wasn't, it wasn't any of these documents, so.
So, so from all of the information you have, is any of this information that requests to find them qualified and eligible? Have we received that yet?
None of the information is what was requested in this resolution.
Okay, so it says that they demonstrated the ability to finance the acquisition and the development of the project proposed, including the review of the CDA of pro forma financial statements for the proposed project, including sources and uses of funds. Did you look at the minutes and see the testimony from the certified public accountant that came up and said not only, he, he swore that not only did they have the financial wherewithal to buy the project, but also to fin- finance the development? We also have letters in the record from the certified public accountant stating that.
I did not, I mentioned that. I did not read through any of that stuff. I just.
Which letters is, are those?
The certified public accountant for the firm.
With Grant, Grant Thornton, that one?
There were several letters.
I know there were several.
And there were several letters.
Grant Thornton is the one who certified that they have the forty million dollars.
Right, and that's, and that's, I think that's, I think that's the one Bill referred to that doesn't, doesn't need these qualifications.
Doesn't mean that qualification.
With limited information.
Well, I'd be, I'm surprised that you don't have a problem with these documents that are requested in this resolution not being presented to us. I'm surprised at that.
Thank you, Laura. I mean, uh. I don't think we can talk to you guys because the Q and E period has ended. So we, I apologize, but I don't mean to be rude, but I'm not sure we can listen. I don't think you're gonna be able to do that.
Well, maybe you whisper in his ear later. So he has a little more information than what he's got now.
We close the.
We close the hearing.
Once the hearing's closed, it's closed.
All right, um, Jody, if there's more documents that you would like Bill to specifically review, could you please share those with, with us and, and we can ask him to come back and comment on those if you like?
Anything in the testimony that refers to their ability to build out the project.
Well, Jody, I think you need to specifically let Bill know what you'd like him to review. If you'd like them to be reviewed.
Yeah, and I also think depending on the documents, something that you would have an independent accounting firm come in and look at. You know, this is, um, a big investment that somebody would, you know, you would want someone like that to look at it. So if, if you're gonna rely on that stuff, you would want someone to look at it. If you choose, and again, you know.
But from the information that we've received so far or if we receive further?
No, if you receive further information.
Yeah, there's no more further information that we've received. So the documents we have are all that you've seen. Um, except the ones that Jody would like you to look at, so she can provide them for you to, to look at also.
I would like clarification from our outside counsel on this personally.
Okay, as far as the financial documents go?
And this, right.
That says there's forty, forty million dollars, forty million dollars cash in the bank, in the account, in the stuff. Teacher's man has not, he says he has not enough.
Mr. Gomazian, this is a work session, so we don't take public from the, we don't take, we don't take, we don't, do not, we do not take comment from the public at a work session. So I'm going to have to ask you, I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
He's giving you wrong information.
I, I have to, I, the only thing I'll say is that.
Mr. Gomazian, I'm gonna ask you politely one more time to please stop commenting.
Came in here with very limited, limited.
He was commenting on the documents we received.
With very limited stuff that you had.
No, but those are the documents he received. If you'd like, Bill, Bill, would you please share with the board the documents that you've gotten?
I think it's ridiculous, okay? It's a dog and pony show and I don't like it.
To look at the financial documents required?
To bring a man here.
Are you actually leaving the board, getting up and walking away?
I can do what I want, okay?
This is one of the biggest deals, if you, so you're not getting up and walking away?
You telling me?
No, I'm having a conversation with you.
I've been dealing with EPCAL for eleven years now, not eleven months, okay? I know it's a big deal.
I think it's a big deal for the whole community and I think the whole community has been dealing with this.
Not only this community, but the community twenty years from now.
Correct, and that's why I think it's so important to be able to have accurate financial statements.
But financial statements from our town controller who has very limited information.
So would you like to go take the documents that we've received and put them out?
I think he needs to research it now. He's, he's.
Okay, but that's what I'm asking. What do you want him to research?
I'm gonna let him look through the record. I'm gonna give him the record.
Okay, so why don't we put, why don't we put all our documents together that we want Bill to review? We can hand them to Bill and we can ask him to come back and give us another, another review.
And Bill, maybe, you know, if, if it's okay, if we can maybe talk to other people that are invested and wants to buy this property as well.
What are you talking about?
Well, maybe they, maybe they have something they'd like to share, but I know they can't do it because it's closed.
You guys closed the qualified and eligible. I was willing to keep it open. You guys closed, you guys voted to close it. And when you voted to close it, you closed it, you closed it with the information we have. We, we went out and we asked, we requested, we tried to get more information. We were, we were not providing any other information from the applicant.
I'm satisfied with what I got.
And this is what I'm saying to you. Bill has reviewed the information we've gotten and he has reported off on the information we've gotten, how it applies to, to what we have here. And if you have other information that you would like him to review because you don't think that he has all of the information to be able to report back the financials that we received, I am asking you to then supply that information for Bill to comment on.
I'll give you the record that we got. I'll, I'll give you the record that I got, okay? Which is something that's all been part of public notice. And then you'll have a better picture of what, what I said.
I am gonna say it one more time. This is not an open session to comment on. It's, I'm sorry. This is not an open comment, not an open comment area. All right, uh, first and second to close the work session?
I move we close the work session?
All those in favor?
Bill, I'm sorry to drag you.